And we found out a way to fund their project through fiscal year 22 local parks and playgrounds infrastructure funding that we received from the state. So that left some additional money to program open space. And at the time that you all adopted the open space program, you recall that there was some money that wasn't obligated to a project. And to be able to move these projects ahead, the state's asking that all of the open space money be obligated to a project. So with that said, the committee is recommending that the available program open space funds of $184,719 be obligated to the Willow Grove Outdoor Wellness Project.
Okay. Adam Lovison, that request approved?
If there's something to do with the weight room facility not being eligible for open space, they look at it more of a maintenance. They want a capital investment.
My pleasure.
We were able to work with Dave and again, we're thankful that we had another pot of money there from the state this year to be able to just pocket in there.
Yeah, I was just curious. I don't think we've ever had one turned down. I don't think so. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Gentlemen, item four will be your fiscal year 22 50-50 other public road paving request. Dan Wood.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Commissioners, tonight we have an opportunity to request approval for several paving projects that have been submitted to us for consideration as part of our other public road cost-sharing assistance program, which is generally very popular. When we are able to have funding in that program, the goal of the program is to assist as many folks as possible who will find themselves in situations where they live on public roads that are not otherwise county maintained. It's a situation of the many hundred miles of county maintained roads. We also have hundreds of miles of roads that are public but not otherwise part of the county maintenance system. Recognizing that discrepancy, the program was established several years ago in an effort to help these folks through a 50-50 cost-sharing split, where the county helps them to identify the necessary scope repairs and procure contractor estimates and line up projects along with their neighbors to make improvements to their roads through a one-time project that does not bring the road otherwise into the county maintenance system, but allows us to do the best that we can with the funds that we have to help those folks out. This program was discussed as part of the fiscal year 2022 to 2026 capital improvement program process years ago and months ago. And with the funding that's been made available into that program for this year, we have made a recommendation to move forward with projects listed here as follows on Charlotte Avenue and Corningville, Allen Dale Avenue in LaBelle, Eddie Woods Lane in LaBelle, William Drive and Crest of Town, Buck Cross Lane in Cumberland and Laura Lee Lane in Cumberland. These are areas that have submitted interest to us, provided estimates that they've procured on their own, and we have reviewed them and made a recommendation to you all to move ahead with these projects at this time. Total amount of county funding committed to these projects would be in order of $65,000. Total project cost overall would be double that, around $130,000. If you have any answer, any questions at this point, we'd be seeking recommendation to authorize these projects and then turn the reins over to the citizens to move ahead with the projects and then if all this is needed and send us a portion of the cost on its completion.
This has become one of our most popular projects, Dan, and thank you for ending it up every year. And the citizens certainly appreciate it.
Sir, is that a motion?
There's a motion to accept those projects. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Moving on to our consent agenda tonight, Administrator Bennett.
Commissioner's nine items on your consent agenda tonight. Item five is resolution 21-5, which is an amendment to our rules and regulations governing Allegheny County employees. Item six is an Allegheny County Transit Bus Service agreement with Frostburg State University in the amount of $130,607 to provide service for a one-year term. Item seven is a request for tax abatement for several properties within the city of Cumberland located at 105 Grand Avenue, 443 Columbia Street, 107 Springdale Street, 109 Springdale Street, 309 Cedar Street, and 14 West First Street. All these properties have been acquired by the city and will be demolished for future development. What we're hearing. Item eight is from the scattered sites housing program approving an offer of $17,500 from Slim and Holdings for a property at 134 East Main Street in Westernport. Item nine is the old Allegheny High School demolition, $3,000 to be approved to the Allegheny High Historical Research Methods class. This is part of grant money we've received. Item 10 is the Maryland Heritage Areas Program with the Maryland Historical Trust approved $95,000 for Washington Street Library Restoration Project. Item 11 is the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention grant awarded in the amount of $36,000 for the Sheriff's Office. Item 12 is the Local Management Board of Allegheny County approving the fiscal year 22 agreement between the state, Children's Cabinet, and the Local Management Board. And last but not least is the Senior Care System Annual Plan Agreement for fiscal year 22.
Okay. Gentlemen, who's got it? Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Administrator Bennett.
Nothing else for me?
Attorney Beeman.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Caprell.
Nothing, sir.
Someone had nothing.
I would say nothing, but we had the Lieutenant Governor up here today. He was doing a few events, and we also toured Allegheny High School, and he even went to John Humbert. But, you know, it's interesting that the local school boards were put in this position to determine masks or not mask. And then, you know, they say local autonomy. They say they got the local rights to do whatever you want. And then the State Board of Ed comes in and says, "We don't really care what you say. We're a bunch of unelected people, and we're going to tell all the locals how to do it." So, you know, I don't think that's right. I think our school board is doing the best job they can. And every county's different, and every county should be able to make their own decisions regardless of how you feel one way or another. So they're the elected people, and that's what they're charged with. Okay. With that, we do have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Nightingale and Lee, do you want to give him an update first, or...
Sure.
Why don't you come to the podium, or whatever we want to do here?
You tell me where I'm supposed to be.
Well, Mr. Nightingale, just...
Why don't you come to the podium so they can...
Mr. Nightingale, President Shade asked me to give you an update.
Who? I missed the name.
I'm sorry. Commissioner President Shade.
Okay.
Had asked me to give you an update here. We have met to discuss the issue that you brought before us. At this point, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be referring this to our Traffic Advisory Committee, which is an organization that meets with county officials, county roads officials, state highway officials, and they make traffic-based recommendations on, you know, what sort of regulations should be placed on roads. Mr. Patterson, you said September...
Second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday of the month. So we're going to be bringing this matter to the Traffic Advisory Committee.
They're going to be up there?
Where they meet.
That meeting will be held at the City of Frostburg this month, sir.
Are you going to investigate the roads involved?
I've been to the area. I met you there. Did your own...
Did you see the pictures of the tractor trailer trying to navigate that turn? Show them. You got the picture. Show them to me. Or come up and see me. I've got them all. I live at the White House right along the mountain.
I'll be happy to.
I'm there for you 24/7.
Yes, sir.
So we are referring that to the Traffic Advisory Committee to allow them to review the situation. It's a situation where coal's been coming down out of there for 70 years. We need to figure out what's changed. What's the issue at this point that if it was safely done for years, why is there a problem now?
Want me to ask you that for you?
Well, here's the thing, sir. I'm not an expert on it. The commissioners aren't an expert on it. We're going to refer to the people who do. But what we're going to do is we're going to have them evaluate the situation, make a determination as to what will be the appropriate restriction, if any, to put into place. And then we're going to hear their recommendations once they've had the opportunity to meet. Sir, Mr. DeWitt will be happy to talk with you. He'll meet you out there and see what indicates. He'll come out and do an investigation, do an inspection of the scene. And then ultimately, once the Traffic Advisory Committee has met, they're going to make a recommendation to us as to what the appropriate limitation or restriction to put into place would be. We do take what you're saying very seriously. Sir, I'll tell you more than anyone else, my grandparents eat lunch at the senior center every day. They spend...
That one?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Take a big language from the policy.
Trust me.
So I wanted to go any field up there.
I understand what you're saying. We're taking it seriously. We're going to have our Traffic Advisory Committee meet and make a recommendation. And if they recommend that a restriction is necessary, whatever we can do legally to help assist in the situation, we're going to do.
Okay, now, let me...
Please.
I'm going to answer your question. What happened now that didn't happen then? The size of the vehicles. And the last person stripped that mound went down through Potomac Hollow. Moran owns a big chunk of that ground. I don't know why he won't get permission because he's hauling coal up for Anthony Taylor to mix with his coal, to sell.
And we have looked into that as well, sir. We've looked into whether it's feasible to acquire some sort of right-of-way or to have Moran's make that road accessible.
They never run tractor trailers, and then never run triaxes down that mound until Anthony Taylor started to strip job up the top of Jackson Mountain. Those vehicles were never up there. Were they, gentlemen?
No.
And that's what we're being told by the Bureau of Mines that it's not... The state of that road going down through Potomac Hollow at this point would not be acceptable for trucks to go down. Is that correct?
The one that Potomac Hollow and go across other people's property. The one that they're looking into is the one in Centurion Peak. And that's one Moran runs all the way down to.
The one in Potomac Hollow, Tire Resources was the last one that stripped that mountain. They even took everything down through. Nothing down Jackson Mountain. Nothing.
So we're going to have our Traffic Advisory Committee...
Okay, I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Sure.
And I'm not upset with you.
Of course.
But my quality life has tanked. I'll tell you what I'll do, gentlemen. Any one of you want to spend a month in my house, I'll pay you all expenses. I'll have food catered in. Have your meals catered in for you. See how you enjoy it. Anyone want to take help on that?
Take the money back. That's a lot too bad.
Yeah, tell me. Tell me. You want to try that real quick? You done now?
Yes, that's what we're doing. If you have anything else that you wanted to add.
Yes, I do.
Please.
I'm not going to bore you with reading this, but basically, gentlemen, I'm sure you'll read it. Between Tuesday, August 17th at 12:45 a.m. and Wednesday, August 18th at 6:46 a.m., I've got but five hours sleep. They run for nearly 24 hours during that period of time. Look at them. Now, that's what you'll be agreeing to live with. Now, Creed Brody says, "Mr. Taylor's such a nice guy." These dogs go up at 12, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. They're self-loaded. If there's an injury, there's no one there to save them. They're there by themselves. And I'm not so sure. That's not a safety violation.
It's illegal.
Well, they're self-loaded. Put that in your arsenal. Now, Mr. Brody, I want to go back to the last meeting we had.
Yeah, because let's go on record here. I've already said to Anthony Taylor, I reached out to Anthony.
Okay. All right. I stand corrected, Dan.
And I know that OSHA and Mosha was up there this week and seeing Anthony.
Okay.
Because I got the call this morning.
Okay.
And I told you before, I could get stuck in the middle of something. I didn't want in here because I'm getting accused by both sides here as playing favors.
I haven't accused you of that, but we're getting... I'm going back to the last meeting we had. There's some issues I want to bring up with you.
Okay.
You mentioned it was going to take $2 million to fix one of them roads going down that hill. All right. The road from where the strip jobs down, meeting your Blacktop Road, down is three and a half miles, 20 feet wide. What's going to cost you to repair that in the 15 to 17 years that we're stripping? Huh?
Jack, they paid to use that road. They paid to use that...
I paid for a piece of plot in my house, and I ain't had it for two years.
So we want to... You know, this is a bad thing because this would put me in bad luck. So we're going to start picking and choosing who can drive through what neighborhood and who can do what. I'm trying to help you.
Creed, wait a minute.
I'm trying to help you.
All I have ever said, none of us have ever once shut that strip job down. One rep for that. All we expect them to do is use smaller vehicles. That's all we've ever asked.
And that's what we're going to the Traffic Advisory Committee to ask. You can't arbitrarily just pick something and say you can't use it. We need backing too, or I'll end up in a lawsuit, Allegheny County will, with Mr. Taylor, which we've already been told.
You have the authority of weight and size and restrictions on those roads. Don't tell me you don't.
If the road warrants it, I don't.
I'm not you. I'm talking with the commission.
Well, Creed, can I ask you something?
Absolutely, Mike.
I heard you make the statement that somebody said that we're putting you... I never talked to Anthony Taylor and any of these people.
No, I asked him a long time ago, Mike, to come down and see us. But for some reason, it's getting back to Anthony that I'm trying to put him out of business. So he don't want to talk to me anymore.
Oh, he ain't talking to me?
I got to Bureau of Mines.
I've never seen him. I would know Anthony Taylor if he walked in that door.
I don't know him. I've only talked to him on the phone.
Never talked to him?
And I talked on behalf of Jax to try to get this resolved because I said, "I need to get this resolved."
I asked him... Timmy Wilhahn stopped at... I had to stop and talk to the three of us out there one afternoon, and I asked Timmy to send him down.
Timmy's doing what I got his phone number.
He would never... He would never talk to me. I wouldn't know the guy if he walked in that door.
Now I'm understanding because he won't talk to me anymore.
He's never talked to me.
To stop because he feels that the situation will get escalated. I'm not a cop that can advise or tell someone what to do. I was just trying to resolve this issue. I was one of the shook to Moran's. It is a fact. It is a fact regardless of what anyone says, that they run a coal truck on it. on it, whether, unless it's a county road, it has to be permitted, it follows under the Bureau of Mines. So the way Jackson Mountain has to be permitted, tires were stripping on Moran's ground, it was under permit, Anthony is not stripping on Moran's ground, so now it's not under. So to give it, the road put back in, it has to go in, back into permit, one has to be already engineered. Moran's and Anthony are both agreed to do that, John Kerry's helped him facilitate that, but it takes a length of time to do that. So I don't have no answer for everybody tonight, except I'm trying, except it's put me in a bad place here, a real bad place, because you coming in, it's mad over this. I know that Ocean Motion was up and fined Anthony this week, because I got blamed for that, as I was the one they thought to call, and I said, listen, I'm just trying to resolve this peacefully.
They're always trying to blame somebody for their, their mistake.
If you find out who called, let me know, I want my vacation beer taken up for dinner, here my heart.
We've got a guy that gets up there every morning since this issue was started in a white Ford pickup truck. He starts right there at my corner, and he, he, he's got a real lot of exhaust on it, he starts at, at five-thirty in the morning, he must start work at six o'clock, and he puts on an exhibition for me every morning up and down. Oh, yeah, I called the Sheriff's Department, lady said that, well, we'll try to send a patrolman out to, uh, to talk about it. So I've called the state police, I've called the Sheriff's Department. I said, then you're telling me that you can't help me, but I can't help myself.
Merit tags, Mike.
Merit tags, yeah, every morning, he just flies up that road, he wakes all.
The neighbors are tired of it, you know?
No, no, the, the neighbors up there are afraid to come forward because of these people and their actions. Uh, the, the city administrator came to me last night, said, Mike, he said, you won't have any trouble with, uh, Mr. Warner's grandson anymore because he's not there. I said, he's not there, he put on a health issue for me this morning and this afternoon. He said, well, then, he lied to me. I said, well, what else is new?
Now, what's.
And Creed, nobody, I've, I've never talked to these people.
And, and I have except twice.
I've asked them to meet with me, and they won't do it.
The last time, and it was right before you was in here the last time, I called him and said, I'm in the cut, I'll call you shortly.
So, so gentlemen, here, here's where we're at, okay? The Traffic Advisory Committee's going to meet, they're going to make a determination as to what is safe to come down Jackson Mountain. If they make a determination that it's not safe for combination trucks to come down, we're going to take that under advisement and look at putting restrictions on their own. If, if they say the tri轴s are okay, or the tri轴s aren't, that's going to be an issue that we'll have to address, but what Commissioner Brody was getting to is that none of us up here are road safety experts, none of us are, you know, engineers, we can't make that determination ourself. We're going to put it before people who do this for a living and who we trust to make those recommendations for us, and we'll take that into advisement once we have their recommendation. My understanding is there's an alternative being worked on as far as whether or not taking it off, off of, uh, an alternate route is possible, but that's going to take more time in order to facilitate that. It may happen, it may not, but the, the roads that are necessary in order to do that are entirely out of the county's control. We don't, we don't own the land, we don't have any control over it, it's privately held land, and if they decide to make it available, if they decide to go through the permitting process to get that road activated, then, then that's something that would be an alternative. But, but we have no ability to do that or, or to compel anyone to do that. At this point, putting this before the Traffic Advisory Committee is the only thing that we have available for us, because Commissioner Brody's right, we can't arbitrarily make that decision that trucks have a certain weight or trucks have a certain length can't travel down that road. So we're going to put it before the people that, that we use who are experts on the topic, let them make a recommendation. Director Patterson indicated to me when we spoke earlier that from the time that they meet, it typically takes them about a month to get it, they'll meet, they'll discuss it, they'll investigate, at their following meeting, they're going to make a recommendation. So what we intend is for them to discuss this at the September meeting and have a recommendation to us for the October meeting. I, I know that's not a great timetable, but it's, it's the fastest that we can get this before them in order to get something evaluated and be able to make a rational decision based on what is recommended to us.
Okay. Okay. Now, we're going to go back to last, last meeting, Commissioner Brody, when I mentioned about the tractor trailer that slid to four hundred and fifty feet, and you explained what may have caused the.
Yes.
Do you think because makes it, the person or the vehicle hits when it does that?
No, but if his axle, if his tri轴 wants to travel or something, there's no error in it, 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 it's going to do that.
All the more reason for those tractor trailers not being on that road, but I'm saying, snow and ice winters coming, snow and ice, that's going to be four hundred and fifty feet, that's going to be a thousand feet, and that's right in the Cedar Citizen Center.
Yeah, but that, that's apples and oranges. You're saying it's tired of slip. I'm not going to get tired of slip because he didn't have seventy pounds on his axle, he lifted his axle up to make the turn, when the tires come up, and they come up slow, and anyone who drives a truck knows that, then soon as you hit your brakes, the tires slide. All tri轴s do that, that had really.
It wasn't a tri轴, it was a tractor trailer, Creed, it was a tractor trailer. Wasn't it, Mike?
Yeah, but what happened, uh, a week later, they took a piece of equipment off of this heading.
Yeah, I know, Jamie Russell hauled it up there.
Yeah, he did, and they had to bring the loader down, hook a chain on it, pulled up the hill.
But, you know, again, and I'm not, this is where I'm in a bad spot. When I hauled the four hundred up to Roger Brassier, so I waited right there at Bruce High School for them to come down, hook up in front of me, because I didn't want to pop the drive shaft on that hill.
Case closed.
That's what you do, you say.
Okay, now, this, this first day and the other minutes when the, the, uh, extra-long trailer, when I, Russell was driving it, the three pieces of equipment on it. You, you said he called you.
He, you.
If he was legal, why'd he have to call anybody?
Because he, you take his pictures, he, everyone is, Jack, everyone is afraid of you.
They ought to be. If they were doing what was right, they wouldn't have anything to do now.
And I'm the one, nobody would go to jail.
Hey, Creed, let me tell you something, there's not a person on that hill that I haven't helped in the forty-four years I've been up there. I keep the road clean, you can ask your county driver all the way up to the end of the corporate limits, up at D.D. North Side, all the way down that, with that cobot of mine, I'm up there ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours a flip, to make that easy.
Okay.
Easy for these coal trucks, believe they'll have this winter.
Okay, all right, good enough. I do lower town too, thirty-five-five, I do nine tentile mile, but that is irrelevant to the situation.
No, it, it is, but what I'm saying is, if he had the permits he needed, why did he have to call you?
Because he was worried about the picture, they don't know what's going on.
Did he, did he have the permit?
Yes.
Okay, okay, but it seems strange to me he would call you instead of Anthony Taylor.
Let me know that someone was taking pictures of him, and I said, is the guy in White House? Yes, I said, you'll be okay, it would be no problems, he said, I'm not going to end up getting shot or something here, am I? I said, no, you're absolutely not.
Well, as long as he had the permit, my next, uh, agenda is, is moot, moot point, thank you for letting me know that. The, the final thing I have, gentlemen, this re, this issue can be resolved in one of three ways. Reduce the size of vehicles going up down that mountain, make sure Mr. Taylor knows we don't want to shut the strip job down.
I'm not.
He's, no, he's crying that, he's.
I'm done.
I mean, I have no respect for that man, at least you ought to come and talk to one of us, and we're, we were, I don't want to talk to himself now. Number two, I've got to read my notes here, uh, find the alternate route, different vehicles, my house is up for sale, folks, I've had it. I'm looking for a house elsewhere, uh, you can find all kinds of money for planted properties, I'll tear the siding off where you want, buy my house, when someone comes with the money, they can have it, and then Mr. Taylor won't have to worry about it. But my house is up for sale. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, our next public business meeting is Thursday, September ninth, five p.m.
Thank you.